All right, it is 5:30 and we're gonna try to keep this meeting tight. So, welcome. I'm hoping everybody had a good, and you had some downtime over spring break. And we got back in the saddle today. So, without further ado, let's see, is Downs coming up and I'm Scott speaking first? Okay. And welcome back to Pat. Yeah, it's good to see you.
We'll tell you.
We have to take attendance, anything that... And we have to pray that we have enough people here.
I knew that, too. I was just so excited. Okay, so let's see if we get attendance taken by Mrs. Nash.
Here.
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 Mr. Carlin.
Here.
Mrs. Gaines. Mr. Bowden.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Halal.
Here.
Mr. Herkenmother. Dr. Mayne.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Kynes. Mrs. Montauk.
Here.
Mr. Nolan. Mr. Nicholson. Mr. Rochelle. Mrs. Rosa. Mr. Russell. Mr. Vance.
Here.
Mr. Newton.
I think that's 10. She's checking. We have 10? Okay, yes, we do have a quorum, so we're good.
Thank you, Becky. For those of you that, and welcome everyone. For those of you who are not familiar with Becky's baking skills, I would hurry to be a guinea pig. Very good. So tonight, we'll start off with the PEL update. Basically, there are a couple of items left on the punch list we've been talking about. Some of them have been whittled off. There are a couple of items like the bus loop curb depression and some irrigation options that we've been looking at that will take place over the summer. So we'll be looking for a decision on which irrigation option we want to select. There are a couple out there for the group, which we will get into in the coming weeks. In coordination with the, with the summer break, the bus loop and curb depression will be addressed. Other than that, from a commissioning standpoint, HVAC, so the controls contractor did perform an online sequence of operations modification to the main body of the new addition with respect to the HVAC equipment. And the commissioning agents followed up with them, and as soon as I see a report from them, I'll report back to all that. We expect everything to have gone well, and Studio Jade will also comment on that, that happening. With respect to the closeout, again, we'll be getting together with NPS, Studio Jade, BN and others. The closeout is essentially complete from a documentation perspective. We're just gonna review, make sure everything's in order, and then we'll make a recommendation to accept it to the group within a week or two from now. Regarding the city purchase order for the installation of the window blinds and new Welcome Center conference room. David, do we have an update with the...
We're still waiting for those. They've not been delivered yet.
Okay.
Supply chain options, you know, problems.
Understood. So when that happens, we'll provide notice and that work will be coordinated with the PEL staff. With regard to the rear of the bus loop, NPS still continues to plan to add some additional trees and plantings behind the bus loop. And it says here, one tree was replaced by BN Group, and a picture was sent out. I think everybody's happy with the replacement. And we'll look forward to the, to the balance of improvements that'll come later on.
I just wanted to add that we had a really good meeting this morning with the Tree Commission, and Scott Wheeler was there, and they wanted to hear, you know, an update on everything going on with our project. And they're gonna be helping us with some trees, plantings, and the city has volunteered to help us get them planted, too. But we're waiting until the fall because we won't have the water situation completely straightened out. And we want to make sure we can water these trees in case we have a dry summer, so.
Yeah, I have a question going back to the closeout. Don't we have to have the irrigation determined before we can finalize order?
It could be added supplementally, but if we want to wait until we have a full acceptance of the package once the irrigation is, is added, then that's, that's also acceptable. Right now, we've, we've given PEL everything they need for their maintenance criteria. Onto Rogers, the Downs OPM update. I mean, basically, the, the project is proceeding as, as planned, as scheduled. Gilbane is here to give their update on, on the buyout and the schedule of the bid packages and the solicitations out on the street now, working toward our GMP. There's some current site progress going on where the foundations are being installed at this point. So we have footings and foundation wall being installed at this point, rebar being installed, and all the pertinent inspections that go along with that. We'll let Gilbane and SLAM speak more to the process. With that, I'll open it up to Tony Margida from Gilbane for Gilbane's update.
So, so quickly, really completed work that's, that we've sort of reached some milestones on. Hydro seeding has occurred and tackifier has occurred on the, the stockpile, I'll call it, on the fields. Footings have been completed in area C and D, they're sort of obvious as you drive down Wickham. And then footing prep is, is been completed in area A. And we also completed a series of test pits over the last week. Work that is occurring today, you can kind of see some rock removal in the back of the site that's occurring, as well as bulk excavation continuing as we work back towards the gymnasium. Underground utility coordination is occurring for plumbing and electrical. We have some sleeves we're installing in area C. And then we have prep for foundations and walls that will occur again, sort of moving back into the site. What's gonna occur in the coming weeks? We have some drainage that will occur on the west side of the site. And then walls and footings will continue to progress as we move sort of back into the site. From a procurement perspective, we have an RTA, I think this evening, submitted for approval for roofing. We've received bids for three packages, masonry, glass and glazing, and HVAC. Scope reviews will be occurring this week and next for that. And we have bids due, I believe, for seven packages this week and next. Mist metals, metal panel, air vapor barrier, food service equipment, fire protection, plumbing, and electrical. Those are the big updates.
Tony, can I ask you a question on that one?
Of course.
Yeah, sorry, the roofing specifically. What's the time on that one? Because we didn't, only got it today, and so wasn't actually posted really. You had the long agenda. So they were reading the long agenda.
Then I guess I don't have to answer that.
It was a collective answer.
It's unfortunate. I think we're battling me out.
That's what I do, just not right now. So with that, I think we have an update from SLAM.
Kathy Ellathorpe from SLAM, nice to see you all again. I think our update is basically that we have Tim Thies with us this evening to talk about environmental soils issues. We are continuing to answer RFIs as they come in for bidding. That process is going quite well. Ted's well in control of all that stuff, so I don't have to worry about that. He's also been coordinating with David and the rest of the people on staff here because furniture samples will be showing up next Monday. So we will arrange with you guys, or for Amanda to come down and spend an hour with, with one of the distributors, telling you about what you got and how to play with it properly while you have it for your period of time of testing. I think that's it for us right now. I don't know, do you want Tim to come up or?
Yeah.
Thanks, Kathy. So as, as Kathy mentioned, Tim Thies from PAR Engineering is here to give us an update on the environmental soils testing and soil stockpile storage on site. And with that, Tim?
Thank you. It's been a while since I've been in front of this group, so I'm happy to ask or answer any questions going back in time to kind of why we're doing this. But a quick overview of what we've done over the last few months out there as the excavation for the foundation has been occurring. We have been taking that soil out and we've been stockpiling it on top of the old track and field. And as part of that, we have been sampling from underneath what will be the new building. We've been doing bottom and sidewall samples. And we have also recently characterized the pile of material that's, that's on top of the old track and field. We're doing all this under the purview of the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management. It's a requirement as part of this project. We have received almost all of the data back from the sampling beneath the building. We're pleased with the sampling. We have identified very few, what we would refer to as exceedances. That's contaminants above what's considered acceptable for a residential threshold. Very few underneath the building. And underneath the building, that's fine because there's going to be a building on top of it, right? We're gonna have about several feet of material and concrete on top of that. So having a handful of exceedances is not a concern for the Department of Environmental Management. We have also characterized the stockpile. We have recently performed a series of test pits within the stockpile. We collected 19 samples from the stockpile. We have a couple more to get. There was some equipment in, in our way when we were out there, so we couldn't, we couldn't get all the samples, but we got 19 of them. We got a good distribution of the pile, and we're generally pleased with the results of that. Again, what we found was similar to what we expected when we set out to do this program several months ago. And that's to say, we had, early in the process, we had identified some low-level contaminants, things like what are called polyaromatic hydrocarbons. We abbreviate that PAH. We found some low-level PHs out there, some low-level lead, and some low-level petroleum, and arsenic in, in the soil. Arsenic is naturally occurring. It tends to be higher on Equideneck Island than it does the rest of the state. The concentrations that we found were, were typical of what we would expect around this area. And what we found in the stockpile was similar to what we found in those initial test pits. Very, very few PHs. Just a handful of the samples had, had metals, had low-level concentrations of lead, no petroleum. Like I said, very, very little in the way of PHs. I think only one sample had PHs above a, a standard. And then we had arsenic. Arsenic, similar to what we have found across the rest of the site. So overall, we're generally happy with the, with the sampling that we got back from the, the stockpile characterization.
Did you test underneath the stockpile?
We tested underneath the stockpile before we put the soil there, and we put plastic down to put the top, the... The, so we did a, a number of samples within that area, because that's, some of you probably know that's the old Harris Avenue dump. We found underneath the dump, we found high levels of lead and other contaminants within that. In the surface, we found higher concentrations of arsenic in the surface soil there than we found on the rest of the site.
Anything being done about it?
So at some point, the city's gonna have to investigate and then cap that landfill. And that'll have to be done. So what's gonna happen with the soil that's on there right now? Is any soil that we can't reuse on site, either because it's physically unsuitable or because it's from a part of the pile that maybe has contaminants that are too high to be reused on site, that will stay on top of that, that old track and field. It will get graded out, and it will get incorporated into a, a future cap for that landfill.
What's a cap mean?
A cap is what, what we refer to as an engineered control. Essentially, it's a barrier between the contaminated material underneath and the clean soil on top. It can be as much as two feet of clean soil. It can be a plastic cap. When you think of landfills, you think of plastic caps, plastic liners. It can be that. It can be, the DEM allows a whole, a whole bunch of things to be quote-unquote caps. It can be asphalt, it can be concrete, anything that creates a barrier between the, the soil or the very glaze underneath is a cap.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again? So any soil that can't be used, you're gonna spread it out over the track and you're gonna cover the track? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
So the, so the track and field was built on top of the old Harris Avenue dump.
I'm aware of that, yes.
So that is going to be capped in the future. The material, any material that we can't use on site is going to be spread out, and then a cap is going to be put on top of it.
The whole track, around it, the perimeter?
Yes. Yep.
And the asphalt, the whole, the whole program?
Yep.
So what's the elevation of that going to be? How much higher is that gonna make that area?
We don't know yet until we figure out how much of the soil can be reused on site. We won't know how much of it, but it'll be, you know, right now, if we were to spread that over the whole track and field, that would be maybe five more feet on top of it.
Okay. Well, because we would be concerned about water runoff and, and all of that.
So any, any future...
Joe Disanti with Downs Construction. So just to get the facts out there, a couple of things. I just want everybody to understand, the field is not part of our project, number one. So when you do a school construction project, the school district needs to be under its care and control. And there's an invisible line where that field is. There always has been. That field was never part of the, the school project. So that part of the project, we're not including in any of our construction activities. So I know that, Tim, you just said that it's, we're gonna spread soil there. We are not currently, as part of this project, spreading the soil. We're just stockpiling there. So the city at some point in the future is gonna need to look at, do they want to utilize that soil that we are stockpiling there to potentially spread there and create a cap on that site?
When you say that if it can't be used on the new site, if it's not suitable, so do you just continue to test as you go along the soil? I mean, how is it that you determine whether or not to leave that soil there or not?
So we do testing. We also look at, so we have done chemical testing of it. We also will do physical testing of it, right, to make sure it's physically suitable to go places. And then as we work through the final design of the site, we have to identify places that actually need fill, right? So it's, there's a bunch of factors that play into how much of that material will get reused. Is it chemically suitable? Is it physically suitable? Are there places on the school site that can actually take additional fill? So there's a lot that goes into it.
You mean like chemically suitable?
I mean, are the contaminants that are in there suitable to be used on the school site?
If they're suitable, just sit on the track, on the track.
That is what the DEM has allowed us to do with them, is put them on the track. Yeah, so the, the stockpile as a whole, the contaminant concentrations are very low, but they're not homogeneous across the, the pile, right? There's some spots that are a little bit higher than others, although very few that, that were, that were elevated in terms of what was, in terms of the contaminants that are in them. So what we would do is we would carve off a spot that maybe is not suitable to go back on the school site. We would leave that there, and then the rest of the material could be reused on the school site.
So I have another question. So knowing all of this, because you're saying there's PHs, there's lead, there's arsenic, which I understand it's higher, but, you know, I wish that my neighbors, the NAPS, were here because they've been communicating with the DEM pretty regularly about the testing, and they've received some information from the DEM that DDT and DDE were also found in, in the soil. So my question is, if you're doing all this testing, and then is there a systematic way that the soil is being put on that pile? Because I just, and, and obviously, I'm not in the business that you're in, but how are you gonna know which sections of the pile are clean and usable, and which sections have more lead than others? Like, I, I don't understand that.
So, that's a good question.
One of the sections is covered up with plastic right now, the big section on the left.
So there's, there's two questions here. So how do we know what, what parts of it are clean, what parts are dirty? When we go out there, we mark the samples that we collect, right? So we know exactly where those samples were collected. So we can identify areas of the pile that are clean and areas that are dirty, so we can go back to those. There was one spot, so when we were doing the excavation for the building foundation, we do bottoms and we do sidewalls, right? We did find one sidewall sample that had petroleum above a residential standard. So we carved that off separately. We put that on the pile, we put plastic over it. Or we put that on the track and field, we put plastic over it.
Can't you just remove that? I mean, get it out of our area? That's, that's in our neighborhood. It's my back, it's my, in my backyard.
Me, too.
We can talk about that, but again, that, the, the concentration that we found was above a residential standard, but not above an industrial, commercial. So it's not, it's not alarmingly high. It's not higher than what you might find anywhere near a roadway, let's say. But it was higher than what we want to leave next to a school building. So we put it on the track and field, and we, like I said, we covered it in plastic.
How bad is the soil underneath the dirt? You know, the, the, underneath the track?
That I, that has not been investigated yet. The city will have to investigate that.
So you're just burying old problems?
What do you mean?
What's happening right now? You're just burying, so you're just, you're just trying to make that go away, all the contaminants there?
So, like I said, the, the area in the track and field was built on top of what is referred to as the Harrison Avenue dump.
Yeah.
The Harrison Avenue dump will need to be closed by the city in accordance with the, the state protocol for closing old abandoned landfills. That will have to happen.
Closed?
Closed, capped.
Capped.
That's how, so when you talk about a landfill, you talk about closing a landfill, you're talking about capping a landfill.
Capping.
Yep.
So closed and capped are the same?
Correct. Yep.
And you're not gonna do that? The city's gotta do that?
So yeah, just to add again, that the field, the existing field, is not part of the school construction project. So that is a city decision that they're gonna have to decide at what point they're gonna address that.
So the city gave you permission to dump all that soil on that track?
The city gave us permission to just stockpile the soil right now that's there. That's it. We're not spreading it. We're not moving it anywhere else except for stockpiling there with the hopes that that soil can be used as a cap in the future.
Can I ask a question? So the soil that you've been removing in the trucks, is that all contaminated soil?
The, I, I presume you mean the soil that's been going up to the, the track and field?
No.
The trucks that are leaving?
The separate dump trucks.
Aren't they dump trucks that filled with soil that are leaving the site all the time?
Not, not that I'm aware of, no.
No, they're all right. Coming through, leaving it.
So why are you bringing fill in when you have all this fill that you possibly could use?
Well, not all fill is, is the same, right? So when we bring in fill, we have to make sure it's structurally suitable. You know, the fill that you would use under, say, a parking lot is not necessarily the same fill you would use underneath the building, is not the same fill you would use underneath the landscaped area. So the material that's coming out from under the, the building is not structurally suitable. It's not good to have a, a building on top of it. And that's why it's being stockpiled over there, and they're importing structural fill.
So what they do, I'll just share, because I watch it. They bring the soil and then they pack it. We asked the same question, because why are we bringing in all this soil? And that's exactly what we were told, especially if you're gonna put a two-story building there. You have to make sure that ground is sound to be able to hold the facility and the foundation appropriately. And then they pad it and they pound it.
What about the hydro seed on the stockpile? How are you gonna keep that wet so that the grass actually grows?
That's a question for, for Gilbane.
So the subcontractor is required to allow it to germinate, essentially. Gil is turning it green, and then there's a tackifier, because there isn't, there are certain sections, you can see that are rock, that a tackifier has to be applied to sort of...
What is that?
It's a gel.
Yeah, it's like, think of like sticky glue.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, I don't know. I wish, I wish I knew, but, yeah, it's, it's a sticky glue.
So, I don't know if you answered my question though. So is it gonna, are you gonna put like an irrigation system on it to keep it wet so it doesn't get dusty and so the grass grows?
He's gonna spray it until it turns green and germinates, essentially. He's not gonna, he's, they won't put sprinklers everywhere, but they will spray it.
So now that the tackifier's on it, like I said, the tackifier is like, it's like a, a, almost like a glue. It's like a sticky, and it holds the soil there, right? Until the grass germinates. Once it's vegetated and it's germinates, that's an excellent... Germination and vegetation, excellent means of keeping the dust down, keeping the soil in place.
So has it started to grow? I mean, I haven't gotten close enough to see, but... Amanda, I know I'll see it, but...
Right. You know, it, it should, now is about the time it should start germinating. It's been very dry, so it, it may not have yet, but it should, I mean, any day now.
But you don't have to continue spraying it with water to keep it crowning and keep the dust down? That's not...
I mean, if the rain cooperates, you shouldn't have to.
But if the rain doesn't come on?
Then we'll have to spray it.
With water?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Just as a point of reference, we had to do this over at PEL School, and it was the brightest green, like, I mean, it was foliage that was five feet high. So it, it really worked over there.
Okay. I just think you should spray it. I'm like, no, spray it with water. So you're saying spray it with water, not...
Correct.
Okay.
I live next to the pile. It doesn't look like anything's happening yet.
Yeah, as of, as of, I think Friday, we hadn't seen any, any germination yet.
No.
But it also had been very dry, so I'm hopeful that this rain, it pops. Yeah.
So with the rain that happened on Saturday night, are you worried about that, all the, the seed growing getting washed away?
No, I mean, it's intended to, to withstand that with the tackifier. It's intended to hold that all in place.
And I think, if I understood, Tony from Gilbane, if, if it does have bare spots, the contractor will come back and spray it again.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the soil?
Yes. How long is that pile anticipated to be there?
For at least the duration of the, the construction project in, in some form. Because again, we're, we're gonna see how much of it we can reuse during the construction project for the whole school. So as long as the school project is happening, there'll be material up there.
On cap.
How much has been reused?
Uh, none yet, just because we're only in the, the excavation phase at this point.
So are you stockpiling a, a separate stockpile that could potentially be used for use?
Right now, it's really just one large stockpile. It's not really segregated in, in...
I thought, I thought you started to segregate it with the petroleum.
Well, we, we, we didn't physically segregate it. We have samples that we collected of it. We have marked those samples so we can go back to those areas, right? But we have not physically segregated the material yet, so.
The report. Do we have a report yet?
So the, a report was issued a couple of weeks ago on the preliminary data that we had, and then we issued a report last Friday. We actually got the characterization data back on Thursday, and we issued a report on Friday with all of that data in it.
Do the owners have that?
Yes, we distributed it.
That's probably how it's back.
Yeah.
And this is all, just so everybody knows, this is all progressive. Like I said, this is under the purview of the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, their site remediation program. They oversee this program, and everything we're doing right now is, is as prescribed by the DEM. We've been in close contact with them throughout this process. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim and Joe. Next on the agenda is the informational portion, basically, item A. Rhode Island Energy, the Electrical Service Discussion. We talked about it at some of the prior meetings. We're engaged in dialogue with Rhode Island Energy and the city right now just to determine what the existing leases of the substation are, the, the only lease, and whether or not we need easement in conjunction with that lease to bring in permanent power for the new school. There's proposed to bring in, Rhode Island Energy's gonna install, I think, four additional poles in front of the substation. There are a few evergreen trees in front that would need to come down as part of that operation. And then it's scheduled to go underground in that same approximate area, and then take underground encased conduits into the school. So those discussions are ongoing with Rhode Island Energy and the city. And as soon as we have a firm path, we will inform the group.
First of all, why can't you pull the power from where the power is being taken from right now?
It, it essentially is. Right now, there's some direct burial cables that go under the, the existing field that feed the, the school. And from that same location, we're gonna be bringing in another 1,400 KVA service to... And, um, from that same location, um, we're gonna be bringing in another fourteen hundred K V A service to service the new school. So with that, um, the poles are gonna supply the infrastructure to allow for us to have more available power on site in, in the future. If they expand or so on. So right now, we're gonna be limited to fourteen hundred K V A. Those poles are gonna, again, give us the ability later on to add power. Um, and then we take it underground.
That can't go underground right away? Why do you have to put the four poles up?
There's, there is the possibility and it can go underground right away. The problem is you're right at the very, very edge of the capacity that the, the school requires to operate. So with this, um, again, you know, just to furnish insurance, um, there's the possibility that we can add more power infrastructure, um, in this way. And we're not really leaving the footprint of the substation. The, the poles would be on the footprint of the substation.
Okay, and what's this we're hearing about expanding the road? The access road and building a turnaround?
So with respect to the, um, um, the ninety-nine year lease that, that is, uh, in place with Rhode Island Energy, uh, for that substation, their access to it coming off of Harrison. Um, Rhode Island Energy is gonna pursue, um, their own, you know, assessment of what they need, uh, to improve the infrastructure there. And whatever they need for access and so on will be separate from, from our project. But, you know, as, as part of their, uh, consideration as to how they access the substation in the future. That's, uh, again, a separate conversation. So we're, we're on city, city property from there on out, uh, to the school. Um, so we're basically taking the power underground from that location, um, to the back of the new addition, or the new building, I should say.
Is there anybody here from Rhode Island Energy that knows what's going on?
Not, not here at this meeting now.
How do we get ahold of them?
So there are.
I wanna be on hold for two hours, I just want something to call.
No, I, yeah, and, and that's, that's a problem for all of us, but, um, with respect to that, we have.
This is our, this is our backyard, you know, this is our backyard you're talking about.
No, I know, it's your backyard. Sure.
Cutting trees down.
Yeah.
This is our backyard.
So this.
And widening the road also? They go to one.
It's all wet.
That's wetlands.
It's all wet. I see all markers right in back of my property where, you know, they look like they're gonna be doing something there.
Yeah, the access road coming in from off, off of Harrison's been established for quite some time. I know it's a, it's a little rutted, it's a little wet. I, I don't know and I don't think we know, um, from our, our perspective, um, what Rhode Island Energy is proposing to do to, um, upgrade their infrastructure and their access. Like I said, that is, that is a separate conversation, but we are involved with them. There are a couple of individuals over there that we, uh, are speaking to that are responsible.
Are they gonna keep you informed?
Absolutely.
And you're gonna keep us informed?
Absolutely. Yeah, so over the next couple of weeks, we should expect to see and hear more information about, um, all of that. And then at some point, Polly, I think, was gonna mention, we're gonna approach the, uh, the city council with, uh, with our direct plans.
Is it possible to get someone from Rhode Island Energy to come to you?
Yeah, for the next meeting, I don't see why not. By then, we, we should have an established path, so, yes, certainly.
What's the?
No, go Eric.
What's the meeting on the twenty-sixth of April?
Oh, that would be the, uh, the city council meeting, yeah, with, with regard to the easement. But the thing is, right at the very moment, we're, we're undefined, the city is, is currently of the opinion that we may not need an easement based on the existing agreement. So that's what we're trying to get to, to the bottom of. So by the time we get to the next meeting, we should be, we should be clear on our direction as to what we need and what we don't need.
So we're going for the council in April to share what we've been informed by Rhode Island Energy. Like, in order to have a conversation about that road and about what's going on over there with what Rhode Island Energy is doing.
Yeah.
I believe. I should write a letter requesting the city council have a workshop or something, or someone do something. Because we are, we don't have any purview, we don't have any oversight to that.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm just throwing it out there and defer to the co-chairs for that, but I don't know, I think we've landed here.
Yes, if you could write, um, to, certainly to Joe and to Zion about having a workshop, that would be helpful. Because this city, and it is, the neighbors need to be able to weigh in.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, it's, there's a two-pronged conversation, you know, the needs of the school and the power infrastructure and, and Rhode Island Energy and this access and, and, and proximity to your property.
It's been marked with blue ribbons for the last twenty years.
Yeah.
And everybody's got pictures of those, but the ribbons are mostly gone now, I don't know why.
Yeah. Okay.
So, because it's bigger too for them, not just the school, so, just that's why.
So there are a lot of us here who live on Sullivan Street, so is it, are you definitely gonna, is, is the plan to definitely cut down the evergreens and install four utility poles?
Yes, as it is.
That definitely happening?
Yes.
And why do you have to do that if it's something that the school might need in the future?
Well, if, if the poles, um, weren't to go in, you know, again, the, there's, um, an electrical load calculation and letter. Um, it's, it's right at the cusp of, of its, uh, power availability to service the school as it currently is shown. So it's, um.
It's too close.
Yeah, it's too close for comfort, that's basically it.
And the alternative, just so, you know, it can be said, would mean to add more, you'd have to have utilities all the way, poles all the way to the school, so this.
No, no, not necessarily. So what would happen is the, the four poles that would go up right in front of the substation currently, there's gravel pathway right there. There would be additional infrastructure, uh, amended or added to those poles.
So it's not in the, the footprint right now, so it's not in the same footprint?
It is, it's, it's in the footprint of, of the, so right now, it's fenced and in front of it, they have maybe, uh, eighteen foot wide gravel pathway.
Yeah.
That abuts the backside of the track.
Yeah.
So at the backside of the gravel pathway closest to the track, along that line is where the poles would be installed. And that's close to the, to the trees that are there. So, you know, the, the trees can't interfere with the power lines going from pole to pole. So that's why the trees would come down. And then there's one last pole, the very end of it, there's a, a manhole right there. Um, and that, and a pole would be close to that. And off of that, um, the riser would come down and we would take the rest of the, uh, conduits in underground from that spot.
Is it possible when those trees come down to plant other trees that would be more suitable for that, um, to accommodate those holes?
Yeah, as, as long as they're not gonna interfere with, with, with height and, and the lines and other.
And is there any way to repurpose those trees that are being taken down? I know how we love our trees here in Newport, so.
They're, they're too large, we, we've had Scott Wheeler out there and, uh, you know, for the purposes, it just wouldn't be practical to try to save or repurpose those trees.
Okay. And, um, I had the, the drawing that you're just referring to, I think, this one, like showing where the poles are.
Yes, yes, that was something I said.
So would those poles have light tunnel?
Um, I, I, not as a street light goes. Um, if, if Rhode Island Energy, you know, decides that they need any type of permanent light on the pole for serviceability, um, I guess that will come out in their design. But we're, we're trying to get to the point where we can let them go on their design and, uh, the part of the conversation is the easements. And, uh, that's important to the project to get that, it's a critical path, um, from a timing perspective, to get all this in place. So that's why it's important we, uh, move in the, in the bright direction now.
Well, this is probably not a, a question that you can answer, but I, I'm, we've been seeing in the neighborhood, the trucks have been at the station and it looks like they're expanding capacity somehow. They've been doing a lot of work. So a question that I have is how much additional noise is gonna come off the substation? And again, maybe that's not something you can answer.
Yeah, again, you're correct, uh, it's, it's not something I can speak to, I, I'm not sure how much more work they might wanna do. They might be there for regular, regular maintenance at this point. Um, I, I can't say that they're improving infrastructure, uh, other than, you know.
When they, when we are.
They've been looking, they've been working up top.
They said they're doing some of this beyond the school system, it has been.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with.
Right.
This.
If my memory serves me correctly, they are expanding and they're doing things for the south portion of Newport. They needed to put in some additional services, et cetera. So they are doing that work anyways. So when we met with them, they felt it was very timely, you know, for us to have this discussion because they're doing work already to upgrade that substation. They have to do some kind of four, four things they have to do. But they did bring that up, so that's why we met when we met. And then the trees, none of us wanted the trees cut down. But because of where the poles must be located according to the diagrams and when they were walking it out, the trees had to come down because they were concerned about the wires and people working on them. So we did ask and Scott Wheeler has already agreed, I should say this, but, um, we're gonna put more plantings in around there. I'm just saying, it's probably the neighborhood, so they are used to it. I have not seen anything about widening the street, but.
Yeah.
It sounds like that's what they wanna do.
So this meeting on the twenty-sixth, can we go to?
This is the council meeting, yes, yes, I've requested to be on the.
So the, uh, the high school currently is getting its power from the substation.
Yeah.
And that's underground.
Yes.
And after the four poles go in, you're talking about maybe running that power underground to high school?
It goes back to underground, yeah.
So, so that would mean you'd have to dig up that section of the track?
Well, no.
Where you're stockpiling.
It's actually in, in, it's, um, I'm not sure if we've got it happy, but the, um, site plan shows us going out to the e, outer edge of our limits of disturbance, um, at the outside of the site. It would be to the west end of the, of the track going around it, behind it and off the back of the school.
Behind the dump, the current, uh.
Behind.
Not the stockpile, but the, what the track is built on.
Just behind it.
Okay.
But that's not final, right?
That's not part of the dump.
The two options, one is to go out and around because there'd be some blasting required and the other would be going through the strip.
There, there really isn't a permissible path to go through the field just yet. Um, that, that is a possibility. It's not something we're currently, uh, planning to do as designed. It is going around the field to start. And if that, uh, path becomes, uh, a plausible option, uh, for the project, we could consider it. But it also has some implications to do with the landfill. Tim might tell you that, you know, um, we might, uh, come under advisement that those, uh, conduits may or may not be permissible to go through that particular area.
And what is the timeline for these times to do that?
Really, I mean, the, the most, for the most part, the infrastructure would be in place, uh, probably starting in the fall of, uh, maybe, um, twenty-three at the earliest and then, um, you know, the, the summer of twenty-four would be really the substantial amount of, of work that would happen there to supply permanent power to the new school.
But that's just a backup system, right? Cause there's already power coming to the high school, it's just additional.
Yeah, no, this, this would basically, you know, replace, um, that power structure coming to the school currently.
So it is being used?
Um.
It's not a backup?
When, when you say backup, no, this is gonna be a new service coming to the new building and, and, and it's also gonna feed, uh, the NACTEC building, which will be staying, um, indefinitely until if and when. Um, so the current power pathways will be replaced by this, uh, this new.
When does the gym get taken down?
Uh, the gym is going to be, um, January, February of, uh, of twenty-four. Um, we're gonna start then and, uh, we left it in place, uh, to allow programming to continue, um, you know, as long as we could, so. That's when that's planned to go. Any other questions with respect to the power service? And like I said, we are in conversations with Rhode Island Energy and, and city council now to determine.
A name of, and a name of somebody to contact at Rhode Island Energy that's gonna talk to us?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
If you can, if you could get that to us, that would be great.
Certainly, yeah, we can publish, um, those, um, contacts and, um, we will try to arrange conversation at, at the next S B C with, with Rhode Island Energy here.
So sorry, one more question on the easement. You're not sure if you need the easement or anything, but Dr. Jermaine, are you gonna be at the meeting, the next city council meeting to discuss the easement with the council? Okay, but you're not sure if you need it?
Correct, yeah, city council is not sure, um, so far, as we've been advised.
And that's Rhode Island Energy, it has to us to go.
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
And that's specifically for the utility poles?
Um, it's, it's for the utility poles and, and the very little, um, footprint of area that we're gonna be on, on city property before it goes back underground as part of the school project.
Thank you.
Sure. Anything else with respect to that? Thank you. Um, next, and I think I'll let, uh, Joe speak to this, but, uh, the next on the agenda, um, is the, uh, the SLAM added services discussion.
It's, uh, an action item, so I don't know if you wanna.
Can we have someone make the motion for the SLAM added services site redesign in the amount of two hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and twenty? So moved by Ray, seconded by, um, Louisa? Okay.
So there was a backup to this in your package, um, just gonna give you a little background and then answer any questions if you have any. Back in January, uh, twenty-three, twenty-three, uh, the S B C actually, uh, approved a hundred fifty-eight thousand to SLAM for added service for the value management. At that time, we had asked to hold the PAR portion of that, uh, because we believed that the scope of work wasn't a hundred percent correct. And also at that time, a decision was made to keep the NACTEC building here in place and the assumption is until such time, we have to design around it. Uh, SLAM went back to their sub consultants, um, and asked for an updated amendment from, uh, PAR, uh, and, um, from Studio Jade and Traverse and any of their other consultants that might have been impacted. Uh, the PAR amendment had to do with some interim work that they did as far as utilities, as well as they're gonna come up with a couple of options on two potential options on how we're gonna run the utilities, either in front of the existing NACTEC down the road or behind the building around, uh, it. So that's part of their scope of work in addition to a lot of other stuff they're doing. Studio Jade, uh, we made some revisions to the fire pump room as well as now they had to make some revisions to the NACTEC building staying as far as mechanicals. And Traverse, um, who's a landscape architect, went back and looked at it and said, well, you're not doing the, the field anymore. So at this point, we're gonna actually credit you back some dollars because you're not gonna need our construction administration services, but you do need some other changes that are happening. So the overall delta there was two thousand dollars for. So this concludes, we believe, any changes to the professional services for the value management items on the log. Um, and this approval is for two hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars.
Any further discussion or questions that you'd like to ask on this? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? All right, it passes unanimously. And the next one is, um, can we have someone that will make the motion for Gilbane, um, R T A zero zero nine for bid package zero seven A? And this is for roofing. Okay, it was moved by, uh. Oh, okay, sorry. By Ray and seconded by Kendra. And now, um, we'll have.
I'm sorry.
The roofing expert, come on up, because we have some things to talk about.
Thank you, Becky. Yeah, with respect to the R T A, um, for three point four seven million dollars, uh, for the roofing, um, package, um, bid package zero seven A. And with that, um, we'll note that the original estimate was figured off of the sixty percent C D package, which included, um, automotive Cosmo and Essential at the time. So, um, on, on a percentage comparison, um, the roof area was reduced by, uh, twelve thousand, seven hundred and forty-one square feet coming into this bid. So, um, it basically represents an eleven point three five percent reduction in area. And the R T A value, um, figuring the same reduction from the sixty percent C D area estimated cost for the scope is at twelve point nine seven percent. So the, the actual, uh, cost is commensurate with the, uh, with the area reduction. So that fared out well. Uh, but the reason I, uh, interrupted was there are a couple of alternates.
Uh, but the reason I interrupted was there are a couple of alternates.
I'm confused by that because we reduced it, but it went up by, the cost went up by two-hundred-and-thousand dollars. So we took eleven percent of the roof out.
So the...
The cost went up by almost ten percent.
The original estimate at sixty percent was three-point-nine-eight-six-nine-four-eight million dollars?
The RTA document says three-point-two.
Three-point-two?
The original, his original bid value was three, three-point-two-seven-eight, and the revised is three-four-seven.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what he's looking at.
Yeah, I, I know what it is.
I'm looking at the back of the input.
Yes, yeah.
You're looking at, so this is the bid comp. So, so you're looking at
Original?
Original bid. So this is his original bid prior to scope review, and this is the final rec.
Yeah, so we took the...
That's not the original estimate. The original estimate is what he's referring to. So that's what the number is that came in, the originally submitted his bid. Has nothing to do with the estimate. After scope review, he adjusted to three-point-four.
So the three-point-two is after we took the eleven percent roof off?
Has nothing to do with that at all. Nothing to do with it.
It's just first bid.
First bid that came in, but had to get revised and updated based on the scope review because he was missing some scope in his original. So it's nothing to do with the original estimate?
Yeah, yeah, so that's the correlation. Thank you, Tony. Yeah, so for the, for the benefit of the group, um, on, on the broader approach, three-point-nine-eight-six million dollars, essentially four million dollars, was the sixty percent, uh, construction design estimate at the time. So being that there was an eleven percent reduction in area, now the cost is now commensurate with that. So we, we almost took a one-for-one, uh, we, cost reduction and, uh, over the estimate. So it's in line, is what I'm trying to convey. And you agree with that, Rick, after seeing that? Thank you. Um, with respect to the alternates, um, there were two. One, to provide a thirty-year manufacturer system in lieu of the twenty-year. Uh, that is a ninety-six-thousand-dollar add. With respect to that, certainly you would be getting a thicker and maybe more robust design in accepting that alternate, and you know, it, it certainly can be considered. But due to the, uh, the current budget constraints on the project, um, you know, downs at this time, they're not recommending that you move forward with spending that money. Uh, the twenty-year roof that was designed will adequately function. And I did run this by our, uh, Building Envelope, uh, Commissioning Agent, and he agrees that there's a little concern with, with sticking with the original design. If money were no option, and, uh, you know, we might wanna consider looking at the thirty. Um, and, and again, a recommendation is only a recommendation. It's not, it's not the final say, and it's, uh, up to the, uh, to the group to decide.
Question, I guess I have a question on the twenty or the thirty. What is that warranty cut? Is that a prorated warranty or is it a replacement warranty?
Um, it's, it's, um, a little both, but a prorated is always part of the equation. Um, but it, you know, it is, um, a lifetime warranty of sorts. Um, and it is a twenty-year versus thirty-year, and the products would be different going from one system to the other in order to obtain the thirty-year warranty. So you'd be buying additional protection if, if you were to spend the ninety-six-thousand dollars. However, again, saying, you know, given the current budget constraints, can't wholeheartedly say that that's the right move for this project at this time. And the, the chairs and the co-chair can, can, uh, agree or disagree with that.
Twenty years goes by really quick, though.
Yeah, can I, I, I know that we've had a lot of, you know, current Rogers, and I, I don't know what the difference would be between the future potential roof, twenty or thirty year, what we have here now. I mean, I don't want us to repeat the same issues that we have already.
Yeah, I, I can't speak from one system to the next, what was originally applied versus what we have, you know, planned. But I can say that with either system, the manufacturer will be on-site periodically to witness the installation and the details. We have a pre-installation discussion with the design professionals and the manufacturer, manufacturer's rep and others to, uh, make sure that everything is, uh, basically installed as, as per the system requirements and designs to, uh, provide a enforceable warranty. So again, it's just a, a cost differential to, uh, to go from one to the next. Um, another ten years of, uh, a prorated warranty with a little heavier system, but at a cost of ninety-six-thousand dollars, which, um, currently can't afford. So that's, that's alternate one. Alternate two.
Can I just ask on that, I mean, when we, we have to make decisions on those things?
Yeah, so this is an action item for, for this evening. And, you know, with, with respect to the alternates, there's an accepter, a rejecter, a hold option. But because it's a roofing package and submittals have to be, um, put together, um, there, there probably would be a cost to, you know, if, if we were to say hold, and the submittals come through, and during the submittal process, say, we rejected it on, on whatever basis, even if it was still the fiscal basis, um, there may be a cost to resubmit the twenty-year. So...
So it's, reads as an add, so it's being
It's an add.
billed to me as a twenty-year. Is that right?
From the base scope.
It would, so you're saying really today or within the next, uh, couple of weeks, we have to make that decision?
Yeah, today. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I just asked the same question. Today is when the answer would be needed. Um, although we're making a recommendation, we're certainly concerned about cost. Um, a roof is an important part of the project. Uh, there is an option of number one, first of all, Newport is gonna be reimbursed fifty-two and a half percent, at least thirty-five percent guaranteed and up to fifty-two percent. So you're really looking at half that cost if we add it. Um, the other thing is, is that we still have a fairly healthy contingency right now, and that this might be one of the items you look at for, you know, fifty thousand dollars. It might be worth utilizing it for the, uh, a roof that'll be, have ten-year or more warranty on it. So it gives you the option, you could either, you know, not do it. If you wanna do it, there are funding options to it.
How, uh, short are we still overall?
Overall, probably about, if we're tracking back with value management, uh, has been coming in pretty much on target. We were still off about three and a half million to four million, I think it was. But, you know, we're still a long way off.
I'm just gonna say for fifty thousand dollars on a four-million, almost four-million-dollar roof, I think it's a wise investment to go to ten years.
That's the most important part of the whole building.
Yeah.
What, Ray, you're trying to make a decision?
No, no, the roof, I mean, that's seventeen, seventeen million dollars, so we can't keep spending money. I mean, it's gonna be a roof, and it's gonna be a twenty-year roof.
Yeah, the twenty...
It's gonna do the job.
Just for, for record, a twenty-year does meet the ride requirement, too. That's all they ask for, so they don't ask for anything more than that.
Ride is also requiring a constant maintenance now, too.
Correct.
But it's not as if, it's like the old days where you sort of let it support maintenance. And, I mean, now it's like there's a, a mistake requirement to, to maintain.
Yeah. So that's one. And then the second is, um, an option to, it's basically a deduct alternate. And with that, it is coping and fascia details. Um, around the perimeter of the buildings, there's a parapet. And, you know, it's, it's just a, a short wall that comes up, and a piece of metal coping goes over the top of the parapet, and the fascia comes down. Well, for a deduct of forty-two thousand dollars, um, you can forego the horizontal surface of the, uh, parapet metal flashing and have that be the rubber, rubber roof coming over the top, and then the flashing, um, joining up with that. And again, I ran that by SCS, the Building Envelope, uh, Commissioning Agent, and, uh, he felt that was normal and standard practice and doesn't see any problem going with it. Of course, he said, you know, the, the additional coping adds additional protection, um, you know, in those layers. And you may visibly see it, uh, from, say, a third floor vantage point within the building if you look down on some of the other roofs. So that consideration is more so aesthetic than anything else. Um, but it is a forty-two-thousand-dollar, uh, deduct option opportunity. So combined, you know, you're looking at, uh, close to a hundred-and-forty-something thousand dollars that you can either elect to spend toward these improvements or, or not. Um, and again, the deduct alternate is not an improvement. It's just a, it's an alternate means of accomplishing the same thing, just a little less, um, visible appeal and a little less, um, you know, afforded protection over the top.
What's Dan's recommendation on ultimate for much forty-two thousand dollars?
You know, again, and, and, you know, Joe explained that there's, you know, a, a reimbursement differential. But given, um, there's dollars in arrears in the, uh, in the overall, uh, budget at this time, I had recommended that we accept the, uh, deduct alternate. Um, but that, that again is not a final say. That's just a recommendation based on budget alone.
I have a question, just on that. So just to understand, because there wasn't a detail provided with this backup. So you're saying rather than having the metal termination at the roofs and the parapets, if the rubber would return on the side of the building, is that where you're placing?
Yeah, on, on the top of the parapet. So you have, uh, so say you're standing on a roof thing, and you have a parapet wall maybe this high that would come up, and then there would be a, a metal coping that goes over the entire top of the parapet versus just a, a flashing that's flashing.
And that's gonna go over the roof.
The rubber...
So the roof will terminate, and the coping will come over the roof.
The coping would be rubber at that point. So the deduct alternate is to do it with the roofing material?
If we spend the forty-two thousand, we're flashing the roof properly.
Yeah, well...
So I think it, I think that is a good spend. I have to say, I think the quality of that would be different.
Like to leave it in place?
Because it's where the roof terminates, and that's a failure point. And I'm just saying, I think the forty-two dol, the forty-two thousand would be well spent there, maybe in that.
All right. So again, you know, with, with respect to these alternates, there is, um, if, if any further discussion or any further consideration needs to be made, we do have the option to hold the alternate and decide it in the next couple of weeks. You wanna hold it off?
No.
No?
So just to let you know, um, we, we're provided some backup on this, but not until noon today. And so, you know, we made a decision not to send that out because that was kind of, you know, like, we tried to get everything out the Thursday before. But, you know, in the future, I mean, that's something we could do if we get something last minute to send it out. Was that what you guys would like, then? You know, we didn't wanna take it off the agenda because, you know, it's timely. So, um, you know, we made, that decision was made today by myself. And anyway, so just to let you know, okay, so if, um, right now, the way it stands, right? Um, if we were to vote on it the way it is, we would, um, not be, we would not be adding the ninety-two thousand, and we would not be deducting the forty-two thousand. So is that the way we, you know, is that what people are thinking here? Is there anybody else who wants to give us an opinion, you know, on that?
I, I mean, that makes, unfortunately, I, I try to think that makes sense. Like, in an ideal world, would we pick, like, the best option for everything now? But like, I think that the maintenance, the revolving maintenance fund at the school, like, instead is a good point, and we do have to go forward with the recognition that that will be in place, and there will be funds to fix the roof, whereas that wasn't necessarily the case with current Rogers. And, but at the same time, I do also hear what Ray is saying about the forty-two K in terms of if we're gonna cut back, if we wanna cut back very quickly, but failure point. So I'm, I'm kind of on board with that.
Okay.
Isn't, is that forty-two, just so I'm sure, is that about flashing?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's like, isn't, I don't know. My own projects, well, flashing is important. Cloud leaking and everything else.
Yeah.
Right, so... Okay, go ahead, you want to interrupt that?
Yeah, so I'll, just quickly, I'll, I'll, um, I'll tell you what the, uh, the commissioning agent said, the Building Envelope Commissioning Agent said, in particular with respect to this alternate. Said, "From an envelope commissioning viewpoint, both roof details are at the same in how the materials come together to form one continuous barrier. But the original design, meaning the coping, metal coping over, would provide more protection because you have the coping protecting the roof membrane at the top of the parapet. That said, the alternate with the fascia system on the front of the parapet is very common, and I'm not aware of any issues with this type of construction." So, of course, you know, the, the original design with coping over would provide the, the most protection. Uh, but again, not an uncommon detail to see it done, um, as per the, uh, the deduct alternate suggestion.
So is there any more discussion on this? And so the way we're, right, just so everybody understands, right now, we're just, we are approving this the way it was sent in, and it's not gonna, it will include the fascia work, and it will not include the thirty-year, okay? All right, everybody's on it? Okay, so the, so we're not doing the thirty-year roof?
We're saying no to the roof.
No to the roof, right? Because it's our, it's not in there, we have to, we'd have to vote on it. And it's the deduct, we're not taking the deduct.
We're saying no to all.
So we're saying no, right? Yes, both alternates. Okay, is that, any other discussion on that? Okay, any, all right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion the way it stands, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it passes.
Thank you, Becky. With that, that gets us, um, to the end of our regular agenda, um, I believe. And are there any other questions or any other?
Just one. Um, Gilbane has a lot of bid packages coming back in the next couple of weeks or so. Can there be a budget update associated with that? So we all have a better sense now that maybe half the bid packages are in?
Yeah, there is a cost trending that, that's provided by, uh, Gilbane in their monthly reports to us as we go along, so... Yeah, yeah.
I think we suggested something like kind of an over-under kind of thing, too, so people know, is it coming in where we wanted it, you know, where we expected? Um, I think that was helpful today to talk about the, you know, the, the percent, because what did it go down, you know, was it expected? So, um, that's what we'd like to see, too.
Yeah, that can be put together sometime soon, yes.
Question out, are we gonna have a meeting? Do we need to have one next week, or can we wait the two weeks? That was the question.
So I think you could wait the two weeks. Um, and they're, they do have a number of bid packs coming in next couple of weeks, but they will have to be scoped, so that'll take a couple of weeks. So we'll probably be able to come back in mid-May to come with a, a real budget update as well, as well as some recommendations at that point.
No, two weeks, two weeks to get the bids in, and then two weeks for scope reviews. So you're talking about a month from now before you really have... You lost a couple of days.
So both, all right, so I'm confused by what you just said. Are we saying we will meet in two weeks?
I'm saying there's no need to meet in two weeks. There won't be, they're just getting the bids in, we'll have to do the, the scope reviews.
Uh, we're, we're, we're doing scope reviews right now.
Oh, are you?
Okay, you do. So you have items for next two weeks? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, sorry, I misunderstood.
And then there's another round that, that's on that.
Okay, all right.
Two, two weeks, we're meeting in two weeks.
Okay, we are meeting in two weeks.
Yeah, two weeks, two weeks.
Yeah, the budget update will not be until the next round comes in. Okay.
And the next one, um, just because a lot of the questions you all asked were, are going to be at the twenty-sixth meeting, I think it's City Council. A question I'm just asking is, are we wanting to have our, you know, Rhode Island Energy here? When here or at your meeting? We want to see, because this is a City Council matter.
No, but at the next meeting, they asked to see if we'd get a rep here. We're saying, should we move the meeting here if we get the rep here so that it's more convenient for the neighbors?
Rather than a town?
Right. Yeah, I think that makes sense. We have a lot, you know, a lot of people that came this evening, so... Did it pass?
Well, if the meeting, when is the Rhode Island Energy person... Well, if the meeting, when is the Rhode Island Energy person going to come? If he's going to be here in two weeks, then we want to.
Meeting's next week. I'm sure it's the 26th.
That's with the city council.
At the city council.
I know. We should talk to him before that.
That's May, May.
No, April 26.
No, I'm sorry. I'm getting myself confused. Right, it's next week. It's almost better, in my opinion, to ask them to come to your meeting than our.
Yeah, with respect to Rhode Island Energy and the city council, we're trying to put together a meeting shortly, a Zoom meeting actually, just to go over the parameters. And from there, we'll decide what the next step is.
Pat, you look like you were. Like, I understand the desire to talk to Rhode Island Energy, but I think you need the city engineering department at that meeting because it's their project and their site and their amendment to some of these.
So you think, so to go ahead with the 26, is that where?
We have to go to that 26.
26, yeah.
I got, since it was suggested to do a workshop, maybe it's all best to do it in that workshop and then not have them to come to our meeting because it's all, that would be all of Rhode Island Energy needing. You were going to ask for the city council to think of doing a workshop on it.
Yes.
Maybe that's the best venue for that.
But the workshop, would be at an actual meeting?
No, it would be separate.
So we'd have to separate. Right, so I need to, yeah, you know what? I need to talk to people at City Hall and figure out the timing of all of this. And then we'll make the announcement to address the workshop.
Everybody here gets the updates, right?
Or how, how, how we'll get this out.
Every Friday, except the last Friday.
But that just might be a better use of time, both for Rhode Island Energy and the residents to know really all at one time what's going on.
We can read it.
So I think we'll hold, having here at our next week, not having here at our next week.
But what about the city council meeting next week?
Well, that's what I've got to figure out. I mean, I'm sure that there will be people from Rhode Island Energy there, that's what we're talking about. So, but let me find out about this workshop issue and whether or not you'd have the workshop at the council meeting or before the council meeting. I'm not sure right now, but we'll make an announcement about it. Yeah, just not sure.
It for sure will show up in the Friday announcement. So, and if you know of any of your neighbors or anybody you know that, you know, wants more information, please sign up because they're very informative. All right, so is there any other concerns or anything that, before we adjourn? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn? The motion made by Ray, seconded by Kendra. No, hearing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and don't forget your party favor and also your cookies.